Twenty-one, at 6:00 P.M. here in the Legislative Building of the newly renovated City Hall complex. Let's see. Ms. Reynolds, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. School Committee Chair report. I have nothing to report at this time. Resource Committee.
Resource and school building needs our meeting on April 29th. That'll be this Thursday.
That's it. All right. Policy Committee. Mr. Horgan.
I will give your report, your call, and my committee's, the various policy on the docket tonight for final approval. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or concerns or comments? Seeing none, Student Support Committee. Ms. LaBelle Pierce is not with us this evening. Was she on? She on?
Uh, Mrs. LaBelle Pierce will not be able to make it tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Personnel Subcommittee. That would be me. I have nothing to report at this time. Executive Committee, I don't believe there's any information to share on that. And now we get, we come to the student representatives. I see Mr. Myra is on.
Yep, it's just me for tonight.
Okay.
Hey, um, last week we first had vacation, which always was like a vacation for one week. It was a nice break for all student and staff in the Pittsburgh Public Schools across Massachusetts. We're coming into the sports, spring sports season, which started today, which many are very excited, their sense of normalness, and always, we have a great sports team throughout Pittsburgh, so I'm very happy to see, be involved in, with many across volleyball, track, many different sports that people have signed up for or playing to represent our school. And then the Pittsburgh football team had a big win against Oakmont, thirty-nine to fourteen, to end off the season. Had a great season, hope for a great season next year. It was the first time we've been doing, new coach, Solval. It was a great season, a great way to transition what we are, as a great school. And then we are into the fourth quarter right now, so testing is coming up later in May and in June with MCAS for students in ninth, tenth, and eleventh across the district. So that is something that students are preparing for and are getting closer to in school and in classes. We have, we also had the N-E-S-C accreditations that went very well, that happened before when I was on vacation, and it was very well in the high school. It showed very well for our school. They're very proud of our school and how well it's been doing. Everything went very well. And just showing, and overall, we're moving into the fourth quarter here now, so it's the final stretch of the year, and everyone's hoping for a great spring season, so we do great in all our sand dice testing to finish off the year nice and strong.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Myra. Any questions, concerns, comments? Thank you. Next, moving to the approval of minutes from the previous school committee meeting of April 5th, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded, to approve by unanimous consent, on favor.
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. Not, executive session is not necessary at this time. Communications. Yes, Ms.?
Um, I just.
Ms. Cragan.
I can do this.
Yes.
Just want to thank members of the community, but especially the Pittsburgh Cultural Council, which helped support the Artists and Ancestors Program that Stratton Players put on at Forest Hills Cemetery this past weekend. We had standing room only, of course, there were no chairs, but we had more than, more folks come than we anticipated. All four shows were sold out. It was a real treat for me as the playwright and for our cast of players to explore some of the superstars of Pittsburgh's past, including H.M. Francis, who designed the building next to us, City Hall, and the building across the road, the Phoenix Building, Pittsburgh Historical Society. This was a great collaboration between the Historical Society and Stratton Players. So as a member of the school committee, just want to remind folks that Stratton Players is the oldest community theater in the region. We were founded by a Pittsburgh High School English teacher, formerly librarian, and we welcome members. So if our student support, I'm sorry, if our student representatives are interested, please email me, because we are doing live theater, we'll do a reprise, we'll do a sort of a sequel in the fall that'll be a live performance. I know you folks will still be students in the fall, but we'd love to get information to the students. Thank you for our mayor for supporting us and folks who attended. So it was really great to get the arts live and in person again.
Thank you, Ms. Cragan. Any questions? Thank you. No?
No.
Go ahead. Now we're into the public comment period. Before we go into that, Ms. Reynolds, you'd like to say a few words, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I've actually given an awful lot of thought to the suggestion that the superintendent made to adopt the Houghton Mifflin Harcourt Plan, and it's kind of nice that there's not a lot going on tonight, so I have a lot of questions that I'd like to ask and have answered. So I wrote them down, I'll just go along. I suppose it'll be the superintendent that might answer most of them. Can you hear me? Is this okay? Yeah. Has any money been spent to date on any consultants or seminars or training or any other thing regarded to, regarding to the Houghton Mifflin Harcourt, I'll call it H-HM after this, or HMH, to date?
No.
You haven't gone on any trainings that they've provided or?
No.
Nothing?
No.
Okay. So is, is this program an English arts language program only, or does it include the whole package of subjects, kindergarten through twelve?
So the program is English language arts, reading and writing, in addition to.
K to five.
Who was answering? I didn't.
John, sorry.
Oh, John, okay. I can't, if I take my glasses off, I can't see you, and if I put them on, I can't see this. Okay. So you said English, language, arts?
Yep, reading and writing.
Reading and writing only?
Only, yes.
And, and what grades?
K to five.
That's it? There's no subject matter in the high schools?
This program does not cover the high schools. This is only for elementary.
Elementary, well, thank you for providing the books that you did provide. I told you, they were excellent. I really enjoyed reading them all. So that, but that cost a million dollars for the English Language Arts Program, K to five, for six years, huh?
Yes.
Okay. And has it been piloted in our schools or in any other, in our schools, at least for a year?
No. So the committee was looking into piloting the program. However, we decided not to because of the circumstances of this school year, and the eighteen members of the committee decided just to look at programs and not pilot them.
And not pilot them?
Yep.
Because I think it might be wise to pilot for at least a year and compare maybe with two programs and with what we currently have, but so you have, have you to date received any money or benefits from Houghton Mifflin, like if you, if we sign this contract? Or promises of such a thing?
No.
No. And are you relying at all on any government grants? Are you looking, considering any government grants to pay for this?
For this program? No.
No. And does all of the materials that are in the H, H, the Houghton package, do they all line up with the Massachusetts frameworks?
Yes.
They do? Okay. And is the curriculum of the city independent of the books? In other words, yes, you understand?
Say it one more time, Rosemary, sorry.
Is the curriculum that we'd be using independent of the books that we would be purchasing? I realize it's more than books, it's, it's all sorts of support besides that, but are we basing our own, we have our own curriculum and that supplements what we?
No. So our curriculum, we follow the Massachusetts state frameworks, so the curriculum that we are following is based on the Mass curriculum frameworks, and we're using the reading program that is aligned to the standards to implement.
Right. And is it what we were doing all along, or is it something different now?
So this will be, the program will be different, so it will be a different.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. The program will be what?
The program, obviously, right now, we're using Reading and Writing Workshop, Lucy Cawkins, the Teachers College Units of Study, that's what we're using currently.
Yes.
To implement our curriculum or follow the Massachusetts standards.
Yeah.
So instead of using the Teachers Reading and Writing Workshop, we'll be using the Houghton Mifflin.
So there'll be some, some kind of changes, but?
Yes.
Basically, it's a program to supplement, yeah, okay. And are there, are there any foreseen subject matter regarding identity or critical race identity promoted in these programs?
No.
No. Do you know if there is in the rest of the school system, in the high school, or five through, up to high school?
Um, not off the top of my head, Rosemary, but I can definitely get that information for you if you are wondering what books students are using, what books students are reading at the middle school or high school level. I can get those books for you, so you can look at them.
Right, you suggested you might be able to, so that would be good. I'd like that.
Ms. Reynolds, word, you have thirty seconds. It's a three-minute. And I've been very generous with those, with those minutes.
Well, so, Mr. Mayor, I would, I'm recalling.
This is a public comment period, that's why we're.
That's why I asked you what would be the best.
Yes, and that's fine.
Did I come back in at another time?
If you wish.
I would like to.
You're a committee member, you can.
Yeah. I didn't know the rules on that thing, but I can recall when Jimmy was on the thing, there were, there was a lot of discussion, and we don't seem to have that.
Yeah.
I'd like to have that. Yep, okay. Thank you.
You completed it. Thank you.
Yeah, but pick me up another time, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, is there any, anyone else prepared for public comment? I know there may be someone. Luisa Fernandez? No? No, that's not, okay. Now moving into, seeing no other further public comment individuals, we'll move into Superintendent's Report. Mr. Jokel.
We have a pretty brief agenda. We have two items as part of the Superintendent's Report. The first item is the first reading of the school calendar for next year. Every year, we usually present the school calendar to school committee for an initial reading and then a final reading. As standard protocol, we meet with the Teachers Union and confer with them the proposed first reading. We have shared it with the FEA. They have provided us their comments and any questions. We have answered them satisfactorily. This calendar, subject to any changes during negotiations, is the calendar that we propose to move forward with for next school year.
Does this require a vote, Bud?
Tonight, it does not, it's a first reading. Monday night we'll have, next Monday, we'll have a second reading, and that will require a vote.
Any questions? Concerns, comments? Seeing none? Next.
Okay. With us presenting and attending virtually are Eva Kelly and Luisa Fernandez. They have been putting together a community resource book, both in English and Spanish. We want to make sure our students and families know what services, they are eligible and available in the local community. So tonight, I've asked Luisa and Eva to provide a brief summary of what's included, and this will be distributed to all our staff this week, so that they can share with students and our families. So with that as an introduction, Eva, virtually, you go first.
Okay. Thanks for having us, and really, this is Luisa's baby, but I'm just here to introduce it, and then she's going to say a few words. So before I show you how to access this electronically, I'm going to show you the book. Can you guys see it?
Yes.
Is that okay? So this is our book. It's a resource guide for families. We are going to print seven hundred and fifty. Luisa secured some funding from the Cathedral Fund through the Pittsburgh Art Museum, as well as through MOC, their CFCE program, to print the books. She's going to print them in English and in Spanish, and I'm also going to share my screen and show you how to access this online. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Can you see my screen? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the Pittsburgh Public Schools website, the main page. You would go down the sidebar to Community Resource Guide, click on that. We are going to add some different pictures here, so that's why it says it's under construction. But again, if you look on this sidebar, and you can click on the Table of Contents, and that's where you can start, and as you can see, everything is in English and in Spanish. You click on any of these hot links for any resource you might be looking for or need, and this is an exhaustive list, let me tell you. I read through every single one of them, and Luisa typed them all up. Amazing. And let me show you, if you click on one, again, comes up in English and Spanish. If your browser is set to Spanish, this sidebar also comes up in Spanish. And let me tell you, that's not all. We also have, I'm going to stop sharing, and show you the QR code. So if anyone scans this QR code, it'll cut, you will be connected right to that website where you can look through all the resources. So again, Luisa, this is a dream of hers when she started working with the Stewards Program, sponsored by New View Communities. Before I pass it over to her to say a few words, I do also want to thank Dina Gagney, who put this all together and put it online for us. So thank you, Dina, and helped us with the QR code, correct, Luisa? So I'm going to pass it to Luisa, and then you, if anyone has any questions. Sound good?
Yes.
Go ahead, Luisa, your turn.
Hi, good evening. Well, I'm very excited about this project. It took a lot of time, and I want to thank you, Mrs. Kelly, public, because you let me work on this project, and you know, that means a lot for me, because it's going to help not just our families, it's going to help Pittsburgh, it's going to help everyone. So, yeah, it's information about more than one hundred and fifty-five different programs, more than one hundred agencies. So it was a lot of work, but it worth it. Our community deserved this. And, yeah, it was hard for me when I was new in Pittsburgh to find information, so I tried to put everything together, make it easier for other people. So you just go to this website, and everything is there. Not everything, we're working on, we are inviting other organizations to participate, like if you want to put your information there, let me know, email me. But, yeah, I'm thanking Mr. Jokel for support of this.
And I think the goal really is, you know, we can't provide everything for our families, but we can, we can connect them with the resources they need to be healthy and happy and support their children. And Luisa will have editing rights to the website, and she'll be able to add things or change things, when numbers change, people, websites, so we have that covered, too. Any questions? Does anyone have any questions for us? Oh, you know what? Mrs. Greenlee's, when I was talking to her before the program, she had a great idea. She said to make business cards with the QR code and hand those out, which I think is a great idea. Isn't that a great idea? It's really brilliant, thank you. I think we're going to look at that next, that's our next move.
Yes, Ms. Reynolds.
I have new neighbors, and there'll be two children going into the school system. Is this anything that I would, I could have in my hand and deliver to?
Absolutely, Rosemary. Next time, the next time you're at the office, just come by, and I will, I'll give you a few to hand out. In fact, if any other counselors would like some, and the mayor, we could drop some off for you as well.
Thank you.
Yes, Sally. Yep, good, Sally.
Eva, Luisa, this is beautiful. I was able to access it on my, on my laptop. It occurred to me that one category to include would also be arts and culture groups that do serve families. So I'm making a list that's starting with the Pittsburgh Art Museum and including the Cultural Alliance, and there are other, you know, galleries, like the, you know, Boulder Art Gallery and places like that. So since that, you know, that, that is, those are categories that do speak to families, I, I can see that you had your hands full just doing, doing what you did, because what you, you're doing is fantastic and going to be so important for those of us who are meeting, you know, new families to Pittsburgh. So very well done. It's beautiful.
That's a great idea. Let me get a list together, Luisa and I can brainstorm, and then we'll pass it by you, Sally, because you might know of some that we're not aware of. Sound good?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Eva and Luisa. Even though I haven't seen yet, I'm sure it's fantastic, I know the effect of what you do, and we do such a good job.
My question is, is this something that you will update annually, revise, change, et cetera? So it is, so it is current for every school year?
Yes. So the, of course, the written, the printed copies won't be updated, maybe we could do it yearly, but again, the electronic version, Luisa will be able to go in and make adjustments and changes, and she has a little blurb in, in the book saying, if you see anything that's wrong, please let us know, and we'll take care of it. So if you see anything that's wrong, please let us know, one of us, and we'll, we'll be able, Luisa will be able to adjust it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Eva, when, when did you say the seven hundred and fifty copies would be printed? When did you say the seven hundred and fifty copies would be printed?
So Luisa is still waiting for the funding to come through. She's been promised funding, and we're working with one of the funders to how to, how we can make that happen. So soon, as soon as possible. We're ready to print, and you've already gotten three quotes, correct, Luisa? So we know who we can go to for the printing once we secure the funding.
And I guess in the interim, will you be able to print a, just maybe a one-page, I don't want to call it a flyer, but something that can be distributed through our schools on bulletin boards and perhaps some community agencies with the QR code?
Yep, yes, we were working on, that's our next step, for a flyer that we can post around the community, pass out in the schools, and they just scan the QR code, and we'd be able to see that, everything.
Can you hear the question, Eva? Ms. Reynolds asked, what is the cost for printing?
Right. What is the cost? What amount are you looking for?
So Luisa secured, I think it's eight hundred dollars, right? Luisa, she got a low, the lowest quote she received was eight hundred dollars.
And then printing after that?
For the seven hundred and fifty books, which, you know, plus it's, they're doing it in two languages, so three hundred and twenty-five in English, three hundred and twenty-five in Spanish.
Any other questions? Then tonight, we do not have a budget update. I believe we may have one next week, as Mr. Stevens mentioned. This Thursday, we have a Resource and Building Needs Subcommittee meeting, so we'll be updating the Subcommittee meeting on latest budget news and how things are looking for FY22. So the last action item that we have actually is a policy matter, and this is grading and progress reports for policy number five-two-oh-two, this is the second reading. Mr. Horgan, do you want to?
So support is really what I'd call just a house, what we've often called just a housekeeping policy. What's actually changing in this policy is if you see this two first bullets, there will be a trimester report card for all elementary schools, grade K through four, for all middle schools, grades five through eight, and alternative high school, grades nine through twelve. So the only difference here is that for all middle schools, grades five through eight was on the second bullet point there with the quarterly report cards. So we moved that to the first bullet point, because it's been changed in practice to being trimester, and that's it. That's the only change to this policy. So very small, and we're looking for your, for the second reading and final approval. Any, any questions or anything? Great.
Okay. There are no other questions, or Jim, do you have?
I have a question, and this is a question for the superintendent on another subject. It's actually not on the agenda, but it's just a thing I wanted to clarify before we move on to the action items. So just following up on what student rep Jack Mara mentioned about spring sports starting, which I think is great for, for everybody. I know that we don't have to approve, because our students are in the classroom, but a lot of high schools have not done in-classroom yet. I think we were one of the first, who, everybody went back, back in March. I was wondering, will the schedules for spring sports be like the fall, winter, and second fall, where you have a pod, where you only play against certain teams, and if a team, you can't play them, then you just don't play that week? You don't. Because I believe at one point during the second fall program, we were supposed to play Leamester, and Leamester couldn't play, and Hingham was supposed to play somebody they couldn't play, and we ended up playing Hingham, which obviously wasn't in our pod, I believe.
Right.
So I didn't know how the, how the scheduling would take place, so it's a, a safe setting for our students, for our coaches, et cetera.
Yeah, I believe we are still following the pod structure.
Okay.
For, for spring sports. I could follow up with the, with the schedule.
Okay.
With, with you, Jim.
Okay, that'd be great.
And again, clearly, you know, football was, was an example. Everything is adaptive and flexible.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Now into action items. Twenty-one dash fifty-nine, approve the Superintendent's recommendation to accept the first reading, the FY21-22 school calendar year.
Make a motion to accept the first reading.
Motion made to accept the first reading of the aforementioned action item. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Greenlee, would you take a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I ask who made the first motion, please? I could not hear them.
Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Stevens made the motion, seconded by Ms. Cragan.
Yes, thank you, I have the second. All right, roll call vote. Mayor Dina Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
I cannot hear him.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Ms. Cragan?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce is absent. Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much. We are unanimous.
Thank you. Next action item, twenty-one dash sixty, approve the Superintendent's recommendation to accept the second reading for the grading and progress reports policy number five-two-zero-two.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Horgan and seconded by Ms. Reynolds, all in, but roll call, please, Ms. Greenlee.
Yes, sir. Mayor Dina Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Cragan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Reynolds?
I don't think she could hear you.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Thank you so much. We are unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you. No need for executive session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Oh, yes.
So just to continue, Mr. Superintendent, you said you have a million dollars, what's the source of that?
The source of that is the Crocker settlement on, or Crocker, actually, it's a reimbursement on the materials that the district paid out of pocket for the Crocker building claim, and we were reimbursed by the insurance company.
Oh, so just to the mayor, as a mayor, there's a ratio that the city pays to the school committee, I mean, to the, to the superintendent. If, if there's excess money, does the ratio go down for the rest of the citizens? Do you see what I'm saying? There's a certain proportion there, I forget the exact proportion, but city's responsible for so much money, too.
I don't believe this is an agenda, I don't think, and it's not at this point to discuss something that's not on the agenda.
We're at the point for adjournment.
Well, then a point of order is, when can we discuss things? Because these meetings just end up being yes and no, with very little talk, and I can remember the old days, there'd be a lot of talk.
The motion on the, on the floor is for adjournment, Ms. Reynolds. Was that seconded?
Yes.
Heavy-handed, I'm going to pass out this thing that I presented.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn by unanimous consent, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.